He's always.
Many, many.
Yeah. Lot of the bad trades too. Lot of the bad trade.
Really?
My wife pointed that out all day.
Before we start the meeting, we are going to bring up the Roseland First Aid Squad to present them with a check. Gentlemen. So. What?
You guys.
Hi, guys.
Hello, hello.
So, we held a wonderful event last October and unfortunately, we haven't had the First Aid Squad here to accept their check. Was it the Mayor's Ball which we had October 22nd, almost a year? First Aid Squad must have a lot of money because they didn't lose. But we wanted them to come and just take, take a picture and recognize them. They did a lot of work helping with the event. They're going to be getting a check for $4,917.
Thanks.
The other half, the other half of the money raised went to the, to, to the library. So we just want to present them with a check and thank them.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
It's a little check because we don't have a big one.
We only got 29.
I think so. Are you in those stations?
Wait, right.
Johnny, exit please.
No, be careful.
One lady just wanted to put the dressing on.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
You're responsible.
Shocker.
Good evening and welcome to the October 17th, 2023 meeting of the Roseland Governing Body. Adequate notice this meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. That the date, time, and location of the meeting were included in the annual meeting schedule. Post on the public bulletin board in municipal building and filed in the office of the Borough Clerk. Those attending tonight's meeting via Zoom, the agenda and any of the relevant, relevant documents can be found on the Borough's website, attached to the meeting notice posted in the news and announcement section. During the meeting, an announcement will be made prior to the two public comment periods. Anyone wishing to make a public comment via computer will be instructed to use the raise your hand icon. And anyone wishing to make a public comment via telephone will be instructed to dial star nine at the appropriate time. For those in attendance in person or remotely, please provide your name and address when selected. Mr. Watkins, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Spango.
Present.
Mr. Barty.
Here.
Mrs. Fishman.
Here.
Mr. Frida.
Here.
Mrs. Parati.
Here.
Mrs. Toley.
Here.
Mr. Trillo.
Here.
Please rise. Thank you. First on the agenda is our first round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, press, use the raise your hand icon and if we're this telephonically, press star nine at the appropriate time.
Good evening. South Paladoro, 50 Cooper Avenue, Roseland. I was here in June. We had a discussion about dead trees that are on the property owned by the Borough on Glen Avenue. I was wondering if this was ever grown up in discussion and what was the results of those discussions. I haven't heard anything to this time.
The arborist?
Yes, it did. I, I, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, yeah, so I believe Public Works did go and I don't know who they spoke with when they determined that the trees.
There are trees.
There are trees that will be cut down and they're on our fall list. And then some trees were the Boroughs and some trees were not. And I don't know who, who Chris Crichit spoke to, but he identified those trees.
The trees that I'm referred to are definitely on the Borough's property. Yes, we found out one tree is not.
Okay, yeah, so.
Oh, that was under discussion, but we don't know the results of the other trees. Is there plans on being, now it's fall.
Yeah.
Uh, falling, just falling off these trees.
Right.
First of all, the dead ones didn't have no fall general during the summer. That's how I was able to pinpoint which ones were dead and possibly could cause a major problem with the storms that we've been having, whether it's summertime or wintertime. And want to alleviate any problems that could actually occur to the property owners surrounding the, that property.
I know Chris said they only cut in fall and spring.
So we did it for fall.
They're, they're on the list. I, I'll find out when they're coming.
So what normally occurs is when they have trees on the list, they go out in the fall to take the trees down.
Okay.
So if, if the tree, the tree cutting, for lack of a better term, is done for the season and those trees aren't taken down, then we'll revisit it. But Maureen can check to see when they're coming.
Yeah, I'll find out when they're coming.
Okay.
But they're not done yet, correct?
No, we need to do the fall cutting yet.
All right, so there are plans of the ones, certain ones being taken down. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And looking, I'm not, so no disaster happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no 20 meters court, just for thing here. I see on your thing, there's an ordinance that was withdrawn and then there's a public thing on an ordinance of 28, there's 23. But there was no paper back there on 28, 23. So I'm just, what is it about? That's all. Information, it's really information. On page four.
I don't have a book 20, 23.
Yeah, it was withdrawn after.
One was withdrawn, but then the other one says ordinance 28, there's 22, 23. Public hearing held on October 23rd.
That's a bond word instead in the public hearing. It's just repurposing it. It's not any extra funding. It's just repurposing.
But there was a reason why we had it.
It was for timing purposes because you have to provide notice and certain activities before adoption. And it missed the publication to get on for tonight. So that's why they had to push it to the 23rd.
So that was that bond word. Okay, thanks. All right, next we have our presentations. I'm going to call up our current honorary mayor. This is a changing of the guard.
He got taller since he became honorary mayor.
Bring up our new honorary mayor. Now listen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to beat up his father a little bit. So our new, our new honorary mayor is Councilman Trillo's son. So Councilman Trillo told me last week, wear a black suit and a red tie. So truth be told, I landed from San Diego at, I don't know, four o'clock this afternoon. I went home, I made sure I had a red tie and a black suit on and I get a text message from Councilman Trillo. Couldn't get him in a suit in time, sorry.
True.
Good trip.
True.
All right, so you're on your way up, right?
You're on your way up.
How was your year? Did you enjoy it?
Well, he does have black on.
Underarm, my second favorite.
I'm as dressed up as he gets.
Can we work? So this is the first time we've done it this way because I think it's the first time post-COVID we'll do it here. So you're going to raise your right hand. You're going to take the oath of office, okay? You're going to repeat after our outgoing mayor. No more phone calls, no more texts, no more complaining to you. You're going to repeat what he says, okay? I'm going to leave it here so both of you can see. Okay, so.
Yeah, for me.
Okay, go ahead.
I do solemn swear.
Sowmish. Louder, like you're yelling at your brother, keep going.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You've done this before? Intuition.
Intuition of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true allegiance and allegiance.
To the same. To the same.
To the same and
established in the United States and in this state.
Established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And your dad.
I do further solemn swear. This way. That I faithfully and partially and partially and justly perform all the duties of honor I do.
Congratulations.
Does the honorary mayor rank ahead of?
Yeah, the honorary. So now, now it's.
So now he can bless him now.
Your kid, him, any penalty may happen.
Just keep rolling down the list.
You're getting lower and lower, Mo.
Mayor Marfananti, thank you for your last year. I hope you enjoyed yourself. Trillo, not this one. You outrank your dad, now you get to do all the fun stuff. All right, congratulations. Next, we have introduction of ordinances. We have ordinance 29-2023. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title home.
An ordinance replacing Section 30-512 of the Land Development Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Stormwater Management and Control in Its Entirety.
Is, is there a motion to introduce ordinance 29-2023?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 29-2023 will be referred to the planning board to ensure that the amendments proposed herein are not inconsistent with the master plan. The ordinance will be posted on the Borough's website and a notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, December 19th, 2023.
Thank you. Next is ordinance number 30-2023. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title home.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland County of Essex State in New Jersey to adopt the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections Model Ordinance for Private Sold Storage.
To motion to introduce ordinance 30-2023.
Motion, Toley.
Second.
Toley, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 30-2023 will be referred to the, will be referred to the planning board to ensure that the amendments proposed herein are not inconsistent with the master plan. The ordinance will be posted on the Borough's website and the notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, December 19th, 2023.
Yes, thank you. Next is ordinance 31-2023. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title home.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 2, Article 8, entitled Public Records and Services, Fees, Charges and Assessments, Section 2-75.7, entitled Fee Charged by the Department of Recreation, Recreation Fee Refund Policy.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 31-2023?
So moved.
Second.
Fishman, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 31-2023 will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October. November 21st.
November 23rd.
Yeah, I'm looking for the, the date of the November meeting. November 21st. Thank you. Public hearing will be held on November, Tuesday, November 21st, 2023.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 32-2023. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title home.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Administration, Section 2-24.10, entitled Outside Employment of Police Officers.
Your motion to introduce ordinance 32-2023.
So moved, second.
Parati, Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 32-2023 will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023.
Next is ordinance 33-23. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title home.
An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Roseland to provide the administration of the requirement imposed by the State of New Jersey for lead-based inspections of certain residential rental dwellings and to establish fees for inspections.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 33-2023?
So moved.
Second.
Barney Fishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 33-2023 will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 25-2023. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title home.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Section 4-14 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Block Party's Permit Required, subsection 4-14.4, entitled Standards for Issuance of Block Party Permits.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, second.
Parati, Fishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on ordinance 25-2023? Seeing and hearing none, may have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Fishman, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing and hearing none, final reading, please, Mr. Watkins.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Section 4-14 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Block Party's Permit Required, subsection 4-14.4, entitled Standards for the Issuance of Block Party Permits.
We have a motion to adopt ordinance 25-2023.
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Trillo, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty.
Yes.
Mrs. Fishman.
Yes.
Mr. Frida.
Yes.
Mrs. Parati.
Yes.
Mrs. Toley.
Yes.
Mr. Trillo.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-2023 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect as provided by law.
Next on the agenda, we have ordinance 26-2023. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance amending Section 3C of Bond Ordinance Number 2, Number 6-2023 of the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, finally adopted February 21st, 2023, in order to amend the description in its entirety.
Do we motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 26-2023?
So moved. Second.
Trillo, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 26-2023? Hearing and seeing none, may have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Fishman, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing and hearing none, final reading, please, Mr. Watkins.
Ordinance amending Section 3C of Bond Ordinance Number 6-2023 of the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, finally adopted February 21st, 2023, in order to amend the description in its entirety.
Do we motion to adopt ordinance 26-2023?
So moved.
Go ahead, Mo.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Who said motion?
Mo.
Trillo, Parati, sorry.
Mr. Barty.
Yes.
Mrs. Fishman.
Yes.
Mr. Frida.
Yes.
Mrs. Parati.
Yes.
Mrs. Toley.
Yes.
Mr. Trillo.
Yes.
Ordinance number 26-2023 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect 20 days after the first publication after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is Resolution 311-2023. October 13th bill list with Councilman Frida recusing himself. Everyone receive the bill list for questions or concerns. If there are none, could I have a motion with Councilman Frida recusing himself?
Motion, Toley.
Second.
Toley, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next, we have Resolutions 1 through 12 on the agenda by resolution number 312-2023 through 323-2023. Questions, concerns, recusals? If there are none, could I please have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Trillo, Barty, I think, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Next, the mayor's report. Just thank everybody for Roseland Day. We got pushed back a day because of the weather because it seems to have rained every Saturday in the fall so far.
This.
With more rain coming this Saturday.
More rain, yeah.
It was a great event. We had a split up, the bonfire, movie night's going to be the 28th. Hopefully it won't rain on that Saturday. But thank everyone, Public Works, Fire Department, last minute, they helped us out with the trucks, Police Department, OEM, everybody did a great job, Recreation, of course. It was a great day. And then this is our last, I believe, televised meeting, November 5th. Team 94 is doing their annual event in Roseland at 300. Great cause, local family. It's, it's, it's a great day. They have, they probably have more stuff than we actually have for Roseland Day. It's, it, it really is a nice event. So if anyone can, can stop by, it would be great for the family. Besides that, I have nothing. Committee reports, finance administration, Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to echo the mayor's comments on Roseland Day and thank the Rec Department, Fire Department, DPW, and everyone, and all the volunteers, everyone that helped on that day. It was a great, a great event. The, um, one other thing to comment on was we had our annual audit and we had no findings, which is really, really impressive and, you know, thank, the testament to Maureen's hard work. Uh, and, you know, so there's a nice job on that. Thank you very much. And just one last thing, I'd just like to, um, thank John Mathias for his, for his serving as the police director for the past year and a half. Uh, he'll be coming on as deputy police director and I'm sure he'll, he'll do just as great of a job as he did as, as the director. So we're, we're very fortunate to have John in the department. And everything he does, exactly. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilman Frida.
Uh, another time.
Thank you. Public, Councilman Barty.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to echo the, um, words of the mayor and Councilman Barty. I want to thank everybody who helped make Roseland Day such a great success. Our First Aid Squad and Fire Department. The Fire Department had the kids in the truck, which was awesome. They got a big kick out of it. I just want to thank them for that. I also want to thank John, I did last time, for doing everything he's done as director. He's been a huge influence and a great force on the department. I want to thank him for that. As far as the Police Department, we are getting close to switching over to dispatch. There's a few things that need to be taken care of. We're thinking probably the end of December, possibly. As far as the Fire Department, we are working on, they are working on two of the sirens. They're in process, they're almost complete. We have been testing, uh, dispatch in West Caldwell with the Fire Department and Chief Loveless has been all around town and so far, so good. We can reach every, everywhere. So it's, it's moving in the right direction. It's just a little slower than we thought, but we'd rather be safe than sorry. So, um, other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Recreation, Councilman Trillo.
Uh, despite all the rain, um, it looks like soccer season should be pretty close to on schedule. Hoping that it's done by before Halloween. Fingers crossed if the rain continues, I might not be able to say that. Um, and then basketball registrations are up and going now. I think you have till November 1st to finish registering. And looking forward to basketball season to start right before the holiday season.
When does, when does the season start for basketball?
They usually, usually you'll get one game in before like the, the winter break, which is something we've, uh, we'll be arguing about when they make the schedule. Uh, we'd rather have practices and then the games will start in January.
I'm worried about uniform.
Oh, no. Until everyone registers, so November 1st, I'll put in the uniform order after everyone's registered.
Good, thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have for Recreation.
Redevelopment, legal counsel, Fishman?
Um, in terms of redevelopment, we see what's going on around us and it's sort of just the beginning and pretty soon we'll see some buildings going up, so that's exciting. I'm sorry.
The wall is up.
Yes, that's true. Yep. In terms of my role as liaison for the Senior Society, this Friday, we have a painting event, Pino's Palette, and you have to sign up by tomorrow if you're interested in going. Flu shots are coming on 10/19 in East Hanover from 10 to 12 and in Roseland from 10 to 12 on 10/26. There will be high dose and regular flu shots and, um, you need to pre-register for that as well. This past Friday, we had a very successful and lovely Oktoberfest luncheon at the Black Forest Inn in Stanhope and 45 seniors attended. And, um, the Thanksgiving lunch is coming up. It's free, uh, but you must RSVP to Maureen Crichley by 11:15 and that's November 17th at 12:30.
Where's that at?
That's in the library.
Thank you. Community Outreach and Shared Services, Councilman Toley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd also like to say that the Roseland Day was a success, even though we had to curtail a couple of activities and it was a little cold, but it went very well. Okay, here we go. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and it's never too late to get an examination. And this goes for both men and women. Early detection can help save lives. Municipal Youth Guidance, there are five adult openings on this committee. Adult members supervise the Roseland High School students with their community service projects in and out of Roseland. The next three projects are October 28th, movie and bonfire night where the students will be serving popcorn, coffee, and cider. In mid-November, the students will be collecting non-perishable food items outside the West Caldwell ShopRite. The food items will be distributed between the Roseland Food Bank, the West Caldwell Food Bank in Caldwell, which is for Roseland and West Caldwell and Caldwell residents, and Our Lady Blessed Sacrament Church Food Bank for their Thanksgiving baskets in the Newark area. In December, the students will help with the Borough's Holiday Extravaganza. Beautification. Our members have finished decorating the Borough for the fall season with chrysanthemums, ribbons, scarecrows, and hay bales. There are two openings on this committee and we welcome ideas for decorating the Borough from our residents. The committee meets four or five times a year as needed. Recently, over the past several weeks, there has been some damage to the flowers and planters. Two planters on Eagle Rock Avenue were knocked down into the street and some flowers were uprooted. It is very upsetting to have this happen since the members on the committee come out on their own time to plant and decorate the Borough in all kinds of weather. I know this for a fact because I was a member for about seven years. Why anyone would want to damage Borough property is beyond me. Environmental Commission, there are two openings on the commission, which only meets about six times a year. If any resident is interested in serving on any committee, please fill out the Cedar's Citizen Leadership Form found on the Borough website and submit it to our Borough Clerk. Thank you. Once again, the Roseland Junior Women's Club is collecting a winter coat and clothes collection for the homeless in Essex County. A collection box is located in our Roseland Library now through October 31st. Items needed for adults and children are new and gently used winter coats, jackets, sweatshirts, sweatpants, scarves, hats, and gloves. New underwear and socks are also needed. Many of you may remember going to Palisades Amusement Park years ago to swim in the wave pool or enjoy the rides and food. A free talk and presentation of pictures is being presented by the West Caldwell Library on Wednesday, November 1st at 7:00 PM. Author Vincent Guarduglio will be on hand to give his presentation and he will have his book, Palisades Amusement Park, A Century of Food and Memories. My husband and I attended this presentation at our Roseland Library about five years ago and we had a good time reminiscing about the fun times there and we also purchased his book. So it is something that I think a lot of people might be interested in going to. Last but not least, this is about the 27th Annual Fifth Grade Halloween Dance, sponsored by the Roseland Junior Women's Club, will be held on Friday, October 27th in the auditorium of Our Lady Blessed Sacrament Church. in the auditorium of Our Lady Blessed Sacrament Church from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. Refreshments, a DJ, and a costume contest are all set. Costumes are required. A flyer is on the borough website, and the flyer has also been distributed to No Worker School fifth grade classes. Thank you. That's all I have. Was that long enough? Quite. Lot going on.
Any member of the council have anything else to add, any report?
Trunk or treat. I was gonna say trunk or treat on the 28th. Trunk or treat will be at No Worker School on Saturday, October 28th. I believe setup time is 11:15 to 12:00 noon, and then the trick-or-treats trunks begin.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we have the approval of minutes. We have the October 3rd caucus meetings with Councilmen Barti and Frida recusing themselves. Everyone else receive the minutes? No questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, second.
Fishman, Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Next, we have our second round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon. If you're with us telephonically, press star or none. Hearing and seeing none. We have... Do we have to go to executive for anything else? No, I said contract duty, but I don't think we have to. Mayor, man. Come around.
Don't trip.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Dad? Councilwoman Fishman? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing them? Were adjourned. And I get to go to sleep whenever I want.
That motion, I guess, doesn't get on the table.
Good job, buddy.
Motion, motion to stay up late? Motion to not do my homework?
Awesome, I know.
See if mom will second that motion.
You two played, you two, yeah, well.
Are we playing?
Yeah.